And the clerk will take the roll.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Reiner.
Here.
Commissioner Gamash.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
Commissioner Jepson.
Here.
Commissioner Meisner.
Here.
Everyone's here this morning, so we'll move on to consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and purchase card claims paid for the period ending July 12, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brassad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Discussion, questions? So you none this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item five is the approval of minutes from the July 9, 2024 county board meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Anybody have any questions, changes, anything? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number six is the chair's remarks, and we have just one item under chair's remarks today. We are very excited to recognize Assistant Anoka County Attorney Chris Carney for receiving the Public Civil Attorney Award of Excellence in Civil Law. The Minnesota State Bar Association gives out two Public Civil Attorney Awards of Excellence annually. These awards are the primary method of recognizing the work and dedication of outstanding public sector attorneys who practice in civil law. Chris has served the Anoka County Attorney's Office for 18 years, spending the last 13 in the office's civil division. There is not a highway project or a major county park initiative in Anoka County over the past several years that has not had Chris's fingerprints on the legal work. She has taken on numerous special projects and collaborates regularly with her counterparts in other counties and state agencies. Joining us today to say a few words are Brian France, Chief Attorney of the Civil Division, who made the nomination, and our guest of honor, of course, Chris Carney. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you, Chair Gamash. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Brian France. I'm the managing attorney for our civil division in the Anoka County Attorney's Office. And you all know Chris and have worked with her from time to time on projects, so I'm sure it comes as no surprise to you that she received this award from the State Bar Association. It was really fun for me to get to nominate her for this award and for many of her colleagues who are here in the back of the room to get to recognize her for her work, because usually, and especially if things are going well, attorneys like Chris sort of fly under the radar and their work goes unnoticed. Chris and I have very different work assignments. Our paths usually don't cross too much, but when they do, I always learn something from working with Chris. She's very patient. She's an excellent teacher. And she is a perfect example of the kind of steady, trustworthy legal advisor that the Civil Division is striving to provide for our county departments, for this board, and for the benefit of the citizens of Anoka County. So I could not be more proud to be her colleague and to have nominated her for this award. Thanks again for inviting me here this morning.
Thanks. Chris?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you for the recognition this morning. And Brian, thank you so much for those very kind comments. This was a surprise to me and a happy surprise because it allowed me to reflect on my work and my team. I don't see an award like this as a testament to my individual work. I know it is part of a team effort and our collective effort as a very strong team that allows success in our work. And so I want to recognize that team briefly. With the leadership in our office, I feel very supported and office-wide leadership and also my division chief. I'm given challenging work and they trust me to handle that, and so that's really important to me and makes my work worthwhile. And I want to recognize my colleagues because they're fantastic and some of them are here today. And we're very collaborative, so we walk into each other's office. We talk about cases. We edit each other's work. And I know in some counties it's more like silos or islands where you don't really connect as much, but we do connect a lot and I rely on my colleagues a lot. So I want to recognize them. Most of all, I want to recognize our support staff because they're fantastic and they are the backbone of our division and office. The support staff have been especially busy now because we're doing a case management, like a system conversion. So they are working hours and hours on that, have been doing that for months in addition to their regular tasks. So they're always available to support us. They do an excellent job in helping organize me because I need all of that help. And I want to recognize them. I'm very grateful for them. And finally, I didn't get to mention this at the State Bar Association, but being at home here in the county, I want to mention it, that I'm so fortunate to have the clients that I have, the departments that I have to work with. And I know you all know them, but I think, I mean, we have so many strong departments in this county. So I don't say this to the exclusion of any other departments, but I work with, for the past several years now, transportation parks, the assessor's office on our tax court work, and there are exceedingly talented people in those departments, as you know. They're super hard workers. And what I love about working with the departments is that I don't feel like I'm an outside person, like they just come to me now and then. They bring me in quite regularly and from the ground up on projects, so I really have the chance to to understand and know intimately what the work is that we're doing. Nothing is then a surprise. I think that's also very unique for our county and appreciate the departments very much. So thanks to all of you for allowing me to be here today. It's really an honor. And I want to thank my team again, and I take this award on their behalf. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, and I don't think there's anybody that was more deserving of something like this, this award. I just want to tell you, of the many years that I was chairing the Parks Committee, it was always nice to have Chris be able to give us the legal advice that we needed from time to time. And the work that you did alone on the work in Fridley, with the city of Fridley, brought us, helped bring us together and find a common solution that seemed seemed to be kind of obvious, but it took us a while to kind of get to that. But I appreciate all the work you put in there. You, I know, was hours and hours that you were making phone calls to other attorneys and helping us, helping us get there. That was a tough, a tough one. But we always knew on the Parks Committee that we were getting, we were getting the right questions asked and we were getting the right information and we were moving forward. So I just appreciate all the work you did on that because that was just tremendous. Commissioner Schulte.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. Chris, I've had a great many opportunities to work with you on the Transportation Committee and the Parks Committee in the past and other committees. And I've always appreciated your counsel and input and trusted it, and that was great. And when Jerry Solma was here as the administrator, he came to me very early on and he said, "When you get advice from the Attorney's Office," he said, "Don't always trust it." He said, "They're pretty good over there." He said, "There's a few you need to look out for." But he said, "When you hear from Chris or Brian," and he threw out a few other names, he said, "You can always trust it." And that was pretty important for me to hear. And the few, the few he said I should look out for aren't here anymore. Take solace, attorneys in the room.
Thank you for that clarification.
And I, the one thing I have learned is the importance of your staff, the people that work for you and what they do for you. You commented on them already. It's really important for that, for you to have them, and I know that. And you've acknowledged them. And I know that when you were working on the Rum River Project and the times you had to reach out to them for help. But thank you, thank you for the times that you've helped us on projects and congratulations on your award.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, Chris, congratulations. I'm gonna echo a lot of the sentiments that Commissioner Gamash talked about with, on Parks for Fridley. I mean, you are clearly an expert in your field in the academic, you know, knowing the law. But that really took perseverance in terms of getting through relationships and figuring all of that out. And those are skills that you, you can't really be taught, you know. You either have them or you don't. So I've really seen you shine in that regard, which is so important in this work in order to have successful outcomes that we don't talk enough about. So thank you so much for that. And Commissioner Schulte talked about transportation. I've seen you get in there around that, too, and I've learned a lot about different laws and practices around that. And he talked a lot about trust, too. And again, I'm gonna circle back to sort of those, those things that can't be taught. In order for people to trust you and build relationships, that's fantastic. And so, congratulations. I have no doubt why you were nominated. And thank you. Thank you for serving Anoka County.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Attorney Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna address my comments to Chris a little bit, also to the board and to the public in general on this. It's really an honor and a privilege to talk briefly about Chris. I've actually known her for a long time, back going to the time when I was on the Coon Rapids City Council. She was representing the county and representing the county ably in working with the city of Coon Rapids. We also have friends in common from her neighborhood in Anoka County as well. So often I've seen some of these State Bar Association awards given to electeds or people trying to get credentialed for higher office or office or whatever. And it was gratifying to me when Brian came to me and said he'd like to nominate Chris for this, this award because I think it's the kind of award that should go to attorneys who are doing the work for the public. And so to see it go to a line attorney and not an elected for political reasons was really gratifying to us. I did want to take a brief moment because I think it's important for you. You've heard from Brian, but I want the public to hear what Brian said in his nomination to the State Bar Association. And after listing some of Chris's achievements and responsibilities, he wrote, "Chris does all of this with an amazing amount of perseverance and professional persistence. Major projects that involve the state, other municipalities, and local politics can be frustrating." All of you know that. "Progress is not always a straight line, but Chris does not give up easily. She continues to engage all players with patience, understanding, and the will to be creative and come to collaborative solutions that everyone involved can sign on to. It is the philosophy of our office that litigation is a last resort. But when the county has to move to litigation, the public can be confident that Chris has covered all the bases and that we have tried to overturn every stone, every solution, look for every opportunity to avoid that where we can." It is for these reasons, setting aside this award, that I made the decision this last year to elevate Chris to a position in our office, which we call Attorney Four, which is trial practice and senior ethics counsel. It's a position of distinction. It's a discretionary appointment by me. But it means that we trust Chris to be a resource, not only to all of you, but to other attorneys in our office, a mentor to people, and attorneys in the community as well as we look to find solutions to problems. Chris, I'm grateful that you're in our office. I want to thank you for your service to Anoka County. And I want to tell you personally that I've enjoyed working with you since I've come on as county attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Anyone else? Commissioner Reiner.
I think we should give her a hand.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, Brian, for being here as well. We'll move now to the committee reports, starting with Transportation Committee, Commissioner Jepson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Transportation Committee met on Wednesday, July 10. All committee members were present and there was no public comment. I have a number of action items that I will be going through. With the first one on the agenda is that the committee recommends approval to enter into contract C0010878. This is a joint powers agreement with the city of Blaine for the maintenance of a new traffic signal system at the intersection of 89th Avenue and 87th Lane that the city is installing. The signal system is not located on a county roadway system, so 100% of the ongoing traffic signal maintenance and inspection costs will be reimbursed by the city of Blaine on a quarterly basis. Anoka County has other JPAs with the city of Blaine and other cities within Anoka County and has the capacity to take on this additional maintenance and responsibility.
Do I have a?
I will move that.
Thank you. It's been moved by Commissioner Jepson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Reiner, discussion, questions? So you none this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number two.
The second item on the agenda is that the committee recommends approval to enter into contract C0010950, a professional services contract with WSB for preliminary design services, environmental documentation, and final design services for corridor construction along Sunset Avenue, Apollo Drive, and Main Street in the cities of Lionel Lakes and Blaine. Improvements to the corridor include adding stormwater drainage system, paved shoulders, turn lanes, ADA improvements, trail connections, and two roundabout controlled intersections. Through a competitive RFP process, the committee recommends award of the contract to WSB in the amount of $339,383. The design contract will be funded by county transportation tax, transportation advancement account, and city local funds. Construction for the project is scheduled for 2027.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the board to enter into contract number C0010950.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reiner and second by Commissioner Jepson. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Brassad?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just curious with this segment where 14 goes across into Lionel Lakes. And there's been a lot of talk about what's happening in Lionel Lakes and moratoriums and development. Just curious, how has the city of Lionel Lakes reached out to county transportation as far as like traffic counts or future road expansions? And, you know, has that happened and what has the county told them about that? And has that weighed into any of their decisions, I guess is my?
I can speak a little bit into what is anticipated for development up in that area, and then Joe, if you want to just comment on the traffic communications with the city. There's approximately 900 acres up in that area. It's a sod farm. There are moratoriums in place right now because there's a lot of concern about, you know, the type of soils and, you know, cities involved with the lawsuit, you know, from White Bear Lake and, you know, it's a story in and of itself. But, you know, basically they're slowing it down a little bit just to, you know, make sure that the development that happens there is appropriate for that area and the kind of conditions that exist. But there are about 900 acres that are slated for development and we'll see where that goes next. Joe?
Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Joe McPherson. I'm the Chief Officer of Transportation and County Engineer. So in regards to this project and some of the development that you see going on around this area, as Commissioner Reiner has mentioned, the city has been in contact with us. And specifically in that southeast quadrant of the intersection with Sunset and Main or 125th, we've had numerous conversations with the city as different proposals have come forward to talk about what the connections to our county road system will look like. For example, there would be a proposal for another connection. It'd be a full access intersection on our County Road 14 or Main Street and Lionel Lakes. And then additionally, on Sunset, south of that intersection, there would be some type of intersection there as well, whether it's a three-quarter access or we'd allow a left in off of Sunset into the development, then they'd only have a right in, right out going the other direction. Or if it's a full access through use of a roundabout or potentially a signal, likely not a signal, maybe more of a roundabout. That's yet to be determined as well as that development continues to unfold. But as Commissioner Reiner mentioned, there's a lot of things up in the air right now and a lot of different things being discussed. In regards to the traffic counts, what we see for the next 15 to 20 years is that a two-lane corridor on both Sunset and 14 in these areas will suffice and will cover the area. If development continues to the north on those sod farms and further through Lionel Lakes and up into Columbus, you may see the need for a four-lane corridor at some point in the future. But for what we see today, a two-lane's gonna work.
Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joe, with this contract with WSB for $340,000, roughly what is the breakdown with city funds, transportation tax, and transportation advancement account funds? Do you know the rough breakdown of that?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair Commissioner, on the construction side, typically when we do a project like this where you have curb and gutter, storm sewer facilities, those types of things, like the ADA ramps that were mentioned earlier, usually the city's into it for about 10%. If there's water and sewer involved, that number can go much higher. We've seen it as high as 15 to 20% of the project cost. So on this, I don't have a good handle on what the full reconstruction of that corridor would be, but I would assume we're gonna be in that 10% spot for the city side. And then, since this isn't a county-state aid highway, that's why we're utilizing the county transportation tax, or we could also use the transportation advancement account funds.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Reiner.
And I just want to add that the road itself, I've been driving on it for, you know, nearly 50 years. And, you know, it's developed up and around that area, but the road itself is very similar to an old country road. And so, a lot more access onto it, a lot more traffic onto it, and so these improvements are desired and very welcome for the folks in Blaine and Lionel Lakes.
Any other comments, questions? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next agenda item is that the committee recommends approval of entering into contract C0010949, a professional services contract with Kim Lee Horn and Associates in the amount of $274,566.19 for preliminary design services, environmental documentation, and final design services for another corridor reconstruction project. But this one is in the city of Columbus and impacts the reconstruction of Potomac Street between Lake Drive and Broadway Avenue. Though the RFP was sent to 14 qualified engineering firms, only Kim Lee Horn responded. This is due to a number of factors, including an industry-wide resource shortages and other factors. Similar to the previous item, the contract will be funded by county transportation tax, transportation advancement account funds, and local city funds.
All right, do I have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move the board to enter into contract number C0010949.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reiner and second by Commissioner Meisner. Discussion?
Just one comment. Again, you know, this is up in the city of Columbus. Well-traveled road from the people that live on that road. It's kind of a shortcut and it is in need of repair. I drive an F-150, driving down that road, it does get a little bouncy. So, again, a welcome improvement down the way.
Anybody else? All right, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Item number four.
The next three items all pertain to the same corridor and the same project called the Anoka Solution Interchange Improvement Project on US Highway 169 at the intersections of West Main Street, Fair Oak Avenue, and Thurston Avenue in the city of Anoka. The city of Anoka, Anoka County, and MinDOT were successful in obtaining full funding for these intersection improvements, specifically Anoka County securing $15 million during the 2018 legislative session for this project. There are three different amendments to three different contracts. So I think it is, even though they pertain to the one project, I think we should take these items each separately, knowing that with all the amendment changes and changes in dollar amount, the total cost of the project still remains at that $15 million. So the first of the three requests is a recommendation for approval of entering into contract C008109A. This is the first amendment to this contract with MinDOT, contract number 1044680. Of these funds, the project development team had allocated over $3.4 million for right-of-way acquisition costs. Thanks to the diligent efforts of the project team, the final right-of-way acquisition costs are less than the original estimate. The agreement amendment reflects a reduction of a little over $570,000, allocating the new right-of-way acquisition to $2,873,392.99.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Questions, comments? Commissioner Schulte.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm just curious if we've actually secured a commitment from MMB that these funds would be convertible from right-of-way to final design and construction. Because I know on the Highway 97 Bridge Project, we had some right-of-way dollars that were committed through bonding and MMB said, "No, you can't do that." And we actually had to go back to the legislature and get a law changed so that we could convert those dollars. I just want to make sure that MMB and MinDOT's Office of State Aid is amenable to us reallocating these dollars.
Joe?
Yeah, Mr. Chair Commissioner, that's a fair question. Actually, speaking kindly of Chris Carney, who was just up here earlier, she helped us walk through that labyrinth of issues we had to get through to make sure that we can move the money around on this project. So to answer your question, yes, we did work with State Aid at MinDOT as well as MMB to ensure that these funds could be moved around. And so before we brought these to the board's attention, we did work through those two offices to make sure that these could be pushed around.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Joe.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second, and this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. That was item four. Item five, I believe.
Yeah, the second of the three, three requests are to enter into contract C0009040B, Agreement Amendment Number Two with MinDOT Agreement 1048670. Originally, the project team allocated a little over 5.5 million for construction and construction administration services. In October 2022, the project team allocated in its First Amendment an additional $496,332.51 for construction contingencies. The project team would like to allocate an additional $277,273.63 of the unallocated funds from the right-of-way acquisition agreement to cover any additional eligible construction contingencies. By allocating these additional funds, the amended agreement will be $6,295,669.63.
I'll move it, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Discussion or comments or questions? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Then we're down to item number six.
And the final, excuse me, the final item for this specific project is to enter into contract C009040B for the Second Amendment on Contract 1044661. This amendment is for design and right-of-way acquisition services. This is an increase in the original agreement amount of $4,488,000 with a previously approved amendment also in October of 2022 of $1,050,000. This amendment proposes an additional $292,930, excuse me, $937.38 of the unallocated funds from the right-of-way acquisition portion of the overall agreement. With this amendment, the new total is $5,830,937.38.
I'll move that, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jepson. Questions, comments? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Mr. Chair, we also had a few informational items on the agenda. We authorized the county engineer to negotiate a contract of a joint powers agreement with the city of Andover for signal reconstruction, rehabilitation, and ADA improvements along Bunker Lake between Hanson Boulevard and Rose Street. And the final thing I wanted to mention was that we also had a good discussion on applying for grant dollars to assist with the IIJA discretionary grant application for Trunk Highway 65 and Bunker. And with that, I complete my Transportation Committee report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jepson, and we'll move down to Human to Human Services Committee report, and Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Human Services Committee, we met on July 11th here in this building. There were no public comments in person. I end no comments via email, but I do accept them at mandy.meisner@anokacounty.mn.gov. The first item before the board is the Consent Agenda. Pretty standard, but there are items under Economic Assistance and Community Corrections. I will go ahead and move that.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Been seconded. We have a motion by Commissioner Meisner, seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. And I just wanted to make sure, you just moved the economic assistance part?
No, I'm sorry, I'm, I, both.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure I had it. So we did, we took care of that one. Item number three.
Item number three is under Behavioral Health. This is approval of Contract C0010939 as well as Contract C0010940. This is with the Alina Health System, Mercy Hospital, Unity Campus for inpatient psychiatric, chemical dependency hold beds, acute medical care, and psychiatric services. Minnesota state law requires Anoka County to maintain or provide for by contract a facility for confinement of persons held temporarily for observation, evaluation, diagnosis, treatment, and care for suspected mental health and substance use disorder issues. So this contract will take care of that. There is some rate ratios right there of $989.37 per patient, and this term would be through July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2026. I will go ahead and move this.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner and seconded by Commissioner Jepson. Questions, comments? Seeing and hearing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. And now we're down to item number four, correct?
Yes. Item number four is a resolution for 2024-HS9. This is recognizing probation officers and probation officer assistants in Anoka County during National Pretrial Probation and Parole Supervision Week, which is July 21st through the 27th of 2024. On the resolution, there is a variety of things. I personally want to note the last one, which is, are a true force for positive change for their clients and within communities. I do also want to invite Dylann Workington, who is in charge of corrections. This is work that I have been studying since I've become a commissioner. I'm quite passionate about. And, Dylann, I would love for you to expand further on parole officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Meisner, as well as the board. I appreciate the recognition and resolution. We have in our county 170 staff that meet this criteria for recognition. We celebrate as a department, along with the county board, the work that's accomplished and the fruit that is borne through this work. It is absolutely humbling, the work that is done, and it is incredibly effective. They guide so much of the activities surrounding criminal justice work. They help with drug court, veterans court, specialized supervision. They guide the court on release decisions. They work with public defenders, county attorneys, private attorneys, as well as treatment providers and a whole host of different elements. They also are our primary staff in our juvenile facilities as well. They are extremely well-trained, and they do so much work to intervention. We believe that our probation officers are the intervention in guiding folks to correct treatment, participation, and lasting change. I just wanted to just also indicate that the research reflects this, and we see it within our county as well. They help reduce incarceration rates. They help reduce victimization. They work with so many different kinds of offending behaviors, DWIs, domestic violence, criminal sexual conduct, and a host of other theft-related, chemical dependency-related, mental health-related concerns, housing concerns, et cetera. The list just goes on and on and on. And this is stressful work, and it's stressful on a daily basis. So these probation officers, probation officer assistants, pretrial workers are all in the trenches. They got their boots on, and they're working hard every day. And so, appreciate that, and thank you so much for allowing us to bring forth a resolution.
Thank you, Dylann.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schulte.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I could take just a second and read the last resolving clause of the resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Anoka County Board of Commissioners celebrates National Pretrial Probation and Parole Supervisors Week, July 21st through the 27th, 2024, and encourages all citizens to honor community corrections professionals for their important contributions to public safety. I just think that's an important clause, and it really does call out what we should be celebrating that week and the important work of that 170 people here in Anoka County that do that work. I'd love it if they could all be here, but this room probably isn't quite big enough, and we couldn't sacrifice the work they do on the streets to have them here. So make sure you tell them on behalf of this board. Thank you.
Will do.
Absolutely. And Commissioner Meisner, are you going to offer the resolution?
I was going to say, I would like to formally offer the resolution.
All right, we have the, we have the resolution before us. Any other comments by anybody? And again, Dylann, thank you for coming today and introducing this to us, and thank your staff. As Commissioner Schulte indicated, the hard work that they do. It's always, every year, it seems like at MACAC, when we're there and having some great conversations and discussions about new things and opportunities that keep coming up. So they're always looking for the best and the new opportunities and new ideas. So I really appreciate that because they always keep us so well-informed as to what's available. But your team is always seemingly ready to be the model and the test out there. But they do great work, and I just appreciate all the time they spend on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a resolution, and seeing no other comments? This is, oh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Commissioner Meisner, anything else?
Yes, there's a couple informational items from that committee. Cindy Caesar, Chief Human Service Officer, presented the Department Highlights of the 2023 Anoka County Human Services Yearbook. So this is a collection summary of the service areas, budget, statistic, trends, outcomes, and innovations from each department, which is pretty lengthy and robust. That is also on the website for any of the public who would wish to see that. And then we had another presentation by Jessica Leff, Economic Assistance Director, who was just sharing the unwinding of Minnesota Department of Human Services temporary COVID-19 policy changes with medical assistance and gradually returning to standard eligibility and enrollment policies. So this has been quite complicated and a long haul, and I do want to recognize the work of everyone in economic assistance. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. And we will move down then to the IT Committee. My chair of the IT Committee, and we met back on July 11th, right here in this conference room, and everyone was in attendance for the meeting. And we have one action item, actually. The Information Technology Committee recommends the county board approve a purchase from CDW-G of Vernon Hills, Illinois, for the Identity Service Engine, a five-year subscription in the amount of $189,884 with a contingency of $37,976 for a total not to exceed $227,860. This is, basically, the background on this one is this is securing Anoka County technology and data is of the utmost importance to us, including the physical network connections that prevent unauthorized access to county systems. And I've spoken about the cybersecurity threats we face every day. And of course, for anybody out there that missed the big event that happened just earlier in the week, these are the types of things that we're trying to protect, even though that wasn't cybersecurity threat, that was a bad download. But anyways, these are the types of things. So we're always looking, and we're looking for solutions to help do this. So this solution will not only lock down potentially vulnerable physical network connections in our environment, but also allow us to provide appropriate network access to county employees and non-employees in a dynamic way. The new solution allows us for a more secure environment, and that's the goal. As the county continues to combat these security threats, we have to be right on top of it. And this is a good item that helps us do that. The funding source is our CEP and also our operating budget. And I will make the motion on this contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and then seconded by Commissioner Reiner. Any comments, questions? Anybody have an idea about, Michael's here, in case we have any detailed questions, he can answer them for us. But seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. In our informational item, we just had one. We were beginning to start talking about personnel structures throughout the item since Vijay started with us back end of December, early January. He has been on this path to bring us along as to what is needed and what he's looking at needing. And so we got a good update as to how that's going and where we are in that process, and there'll be more to come. Commissioner Meisner.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, just commentary about the point that you made earlier about our most recent motion in terms of, you know, information technology is becoming more and more critical to stay in front of. And with the personnel presentation of the committee, it was apparent to me how important it is for us as a board to support restructuring, which includes potential growth in your department in order to be able to respond to things like just happened less than 48 hours ago, I believe, with Microsoft. So I just wanted to put that commentary out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. We'll move on to, and that wraps up my report on IT. We'll move on to item number eight, which is a public hearing to obtain comments on amendments to the ordinance regulating the Anoka County Park System. County Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the agenda today is a public hearing that is set to look at an update and amendment to Anoka County Parks Ordinance, number 2018-01, is set forth in the notice of public hearing that was put out there. I'll now open the public hearing portion of the meeting. The time is 10:13 a.m., and I'd ask that the minutes reflect that the notice of this public hearing was published on June 21st, 28th, and July 5th in the Anoka County Union to inform the public that a hearing would occur during the regular meeting of the Anoka County Board of Commissioners on today's date, July 23rd, 2024, to allow public comment on the proposed update and amendment of that ordinance. Before we receive public comments, Assistant Parks Director Andy Saltvet will give the board an overview of the amended ordinance and kind of brief the board on that. And then we'll turn to the public comment portion of the hearing. Go ahead, Andy.
Thank you, Attorney Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Chair, commissioners. My name's Andy Saltvet. I'm an assistant director with the Parks Department. Every five years, the Parks Department reviews the park ordinances to make sure that they're still current, they're still valid, and they meet the needs of our guests. So this year was that five-year cycle. Fortunately, we did not have any major substantial changes to park ordinances. Most of it was administrative with clarifying titles, definitions, and in more verbiage. There are just a few minor changes reflecting the use, mostly around bicycles and what we call micro mobility devices. So as you go through the parks and you see little electric scooters or e-bikes, we wanted to make sure that we address those as they are a new use or newer recreational activity within the park system and making sure that they work well with all the other traditional users that we have with standard bicycles, walkers, dog walkers, et cetera. Otherwise, most of the other edits, as I had mentioned, were administrative, clarifying definitions, use of permits, et cetera. So no other substantial changes within the parks ordinances for this cycle.
Thank you, Andy. We, stay up there for just a second. We will now begin the live public comment portion of the hearing. The purpose of this part of the hearing is to solicit comments and to gather public opinions regarding the proposed update and amendment of Anoka County Ordinance 2018-01. Andy, did we receive, did the Parks Department receive any written comments or messages submitted prior to today's meeting?
We have not received anything, Attorney Johnson.
Okay, thank you. Just a few ground rules that we normally do on these public hearings. Out of respect for anyone who has come to testify at the hearing today, we ask that they limit comments to three minutes. The board chair retains discretion to extend that time if necessary. We'd say to the public, anybody who has come here to give comment, to provide comments or opinions relevant to the proposed amendment and update of this ordinance, any questions will be referred to staff. Comments of a personal nature or other topics could be reserved for the general public comment session immediately following the regular board meeting. In the rare event that any commissioner needs clarification about the comments, they may inquire. So I'm going to call out now in the boardroom. Are there any members of the public who wish to provide comments on the proposed update and amendments to Anoka County Parks Ordinance 2018-01? I'll call out two more times. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the board on this topic? And a final call, any members of the public who would like to address the board on this topic? Mr. Chair, no one from the public has come to today's board meeting for the public hearing to provide public comment. Hearing no further comments, I would now close the public hearing portion of this meeting and turn the meeting back to you.
Thank you, County Attorney Johnson, and thank you, Andy, for the information provided. So we're down to 8A, where we consider adopting amendments to the ordinance regulating the Anoka County Park System. Is there a motion?
Sure.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reiner. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jepson. Any discussion, anything that anybody saw in there? But it looked, it was quite long. We covered pretty much everything, but nothing, I think, that stands out as concerning. Okay? So if there's no questions or comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Andy. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Andy. And thanks, Jeff Perry, as well. Item number nine is to consider adopting ordinance 2024-01, establishing a local housing trust fund in Anoka County. And let's go to nine here. Okay. You have before you this ordinance. And Tanya, are you going to, yep, help us understand or answer any questions anybody might have?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Tanya West Hafner, the Assistant Director of Community Government Relations. Before you is a request from us to establish a local housing trust fund, which would support affordable housing for persons with low income and also any rental projects, homeownership projects that we would like to do. It also is kind of the basis of where we would put any low-income housing, local housing aid, the statewide aid and the local aid if we are not able to spend it. We'll be asking the HRA to be the, in this here, you'd be asking the HRA to be the administrator, essentially our department. And then we'd also be asking, you'd be asking the HRA to put some levy funds in there to establish the, or establish the fund. So then we can go and request some funds from the state as well.
Okay. Do I have a motion on this?
It's all moved.
Moved by Commissioner Schulte, seconded by Commissioner Meisner. Discussion or questions? Commissioner Schulte and then Commissioner Meisner.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, as I understand it, this trust fund that we're ordaining here will be held by the HRA. And the money that seeds that has to be state, or has to be county funds, and it can't be state or federal funds that seed it. But later than, state or federal funds can be put in there. But it has to be originated with county levy dollars. In this case, HRA levy dollars will be the original, $300,000.
Yeah, it's my understanding as well.
Yes. Yeah, it just has to be a local, a local source of funds. It could be other things besides HRA levy, but we don't have other sources that I know of. So yeah, but it can't be state or federal.
Thank you. Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Commissioner Schulte sort of beat me to the punch. I just wanted to frame it, like, why we were doing it and why it has to be in existence for future funding that we receive. So that was it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. That was item nine. Item number 10. Consider approving employment agreement with James Dickinson and appointing James as the county administrator effective September 9th, 2024. Dee, are you going to introduce or are we just going to go ahead and?
It's all moved, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I, you know, Dee was here, and I thought maybe she wanted to say a few words, but that's fine. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Commissioner Meisner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, I am so pleased with the choice, but how we came about the choice. This was truly a best practice in terms of hiring a third-party agency. We had several highly qualified candidates. And so just going through this process, I know I feel extremely confident of our choice that we selected and how Mr. Dickinson is going to serve Anoka County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. Yeah, I'm in agreement. I thought the process went well. We had two sets of times that we went out for getting applicants, and in that we received a number of good, quality candidates. And every time I read this and I'm going, you know, James Dickinson, I always call him Jim. He's just Jim, has been selected as the new county administrator, and he has 30 years, 30 years of experience in the public sector. That's both in the city of Andover for the years, said as a finance director and then as the city administrator, and also many, a few decades ago here with Anoka County itself. So there are a number of people here today that work for Anoka County that worked with Jim for a number of years while he was here. So I think this is going to be a good addition to our leadership. So anything else? Commissioner Schulte.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we got a long time before Jim actually starts here. I want to thank him for being here, being in the room, and congratulate him, and thank you all for going through this process. And we got a long time to thank Dee for being the interim and going through all the work she's gone through and is going to go through till September 9th and beyond. But truly, thank you, Dee. This has been yeoman's work in a very tumultuous time. It hasn't gone unnoticed, and I truly, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate everything you've done to get us through this time. The search, going through, figuring out how we get here from where we were. It's been a big lift and really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And thanks to all the staff, HR, everybody that was involved. Great work. And now that we have a contract agreement here and it's been moved and seconded, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Jim. All right, we'll go to item number 11. Consider approving employment agreement with Tanya West Hafner and appointing Tanya as the Department Director, Community and Government Relations, effective July 29th, 2024. And do I have a motion on this one?
It's all moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brassad, seconded by Commissioner Reiner. Questions? Comments? Dee.
Thank you, Chair Gamash. I just want to say I'm excited for Tanya to take this position. When we interviewed her way back last fall, this was a sparkle in our eye, and we kind of knew it was coming. But it's a little faster than I think Tanya was aware of. But Tanya has been in the industry for over 28 years. She came from Hennepin County. She brings a wealth of information on housing, community development, and we're just really looking forward to getting her in this new position. So welcome, Tanya.
Yeah, absolutely. It's been great getting to know you and starting working with you for the few months, past few months, but I'm excited for the future and excited to see you flourish in that role. Anyone else? Okay, did I get it? Yes, I did. We got a motion and a second. This is also a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Congratulations, Tanya. Thank you. Committee appointments. Consider appointing Elvis, excuse me, yeah, Elvis. Is it Tabukum? I'm hoping I got the name right. I apologize on that. Community Support Representative to the Adult Mental Health Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending July 31st, 2027. Do I have an offer or do I have a motion on this?
It's all moved.
It's been moved by a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Schulte, seconded by Commissioner Reiner. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it's approved, and it's kind of nice having somebody named Elvis working on our team. Item B, consider reappointing Commander Paul Lenzmeyer, representing law enforcement to the Emergency Medical Services Council for a term ending December 31st, 2027. Do I have a motion?
It's all moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brassad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jepson. I just want to thank Commander, the Commander Paul Lenzmeyer for doing this. I've known him for many years as, when I was Mayor of Andover. He was our commander there for the last few years and appreciated his hard work and glad that he's accepting this. So we're looking forward to that. Anyone else otherwise? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. And then item C is to consider, this is informational purposes, my appointment of Sarah Thompson, RMS Company, and reappointment of Rebecca Johnson, Department of Employment and Economic Development, to the Anoka County Workforce Development Board for a two-year term ending July, excuse me, June 30th of 2026. And this is informational purposes, so we don't need a vote. Okay. All right. Is there anything else to come for the county board today? Oh, Commissioner Jepson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to take a couple minutes of our precious time here. There has been a lot of public comment recently. There's been a lot of social media posts and some really frustrating, disturbing, and just completely false misinformation out there. And I just wanted to take a minute to address it, to comment on it, and to set the record straight on some level. As elected officials, we knowingly put ourselves in the public eye. We are scrutinized, we are critiqued, and we have to live up to the honesty, integrity, integrity, and transparency that we all hold to this honorable seat. And when that is questioned, that's a hard pill to swallow. It really stings, especially when we have conflict with the words being said and the quote-unquote "truth" and facts being put out there. I have a very hard time, even more so, with the misinformation and the quote-unquote "facts" that are put out there to be used as political fodder. It is more of a character. It speaks more to the character of the people who are using homelessness and private citizens for political gain, and it is shameful. The facts that are being claimed by certain individuals of the public and being spread out there are absolutely false. There are no lawsuits, as confirmed yesterday, to the county filed by a private resident. There are no lawsuits out there. There is no documentation that has been submitted to the county or the state making these false claims. No investigation is going on. Yet people believe this awful truth about a local nonprofit who is feeding the hungry, clothing the naked, and housing the homeless. If there are specific questions of fact, of accuracy, of counting of homeless people for financial gain, that is one of the most awful things I can think can happen. And to accuse a local nonprofit who provides an essential service in this county and to question integrity on private citizens who are employed is shameful. I feel like those comments needed to be made. I feel like those comments needed to be heard, and I hope that my colleagues support the truth about what is actually going on, and we can move forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anything else to come before the county vote before we adjourn? Seeing none, we're adjourned.